Good evening and welcome to the Shelburne Planning Commission meeting of August 10th, 2017. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll consider a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Moved by Jason.
Second.
Seconded by Dick. All in favor?
Aye.
Our agenda's approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of July 27th, 2017. We'll consider a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Dick.
Second.
Seconded by Jason. Any discussion, comments? I had a couple of things. Melanie Needle's name is Melanie Needle, not noodle. So that would be a, it's okay. That would be a global change. I would just check all of those. On the second page, under the energy italics, plan to meet Act 174 standards on transportation. I couldn't recall. Is that what we were? I guess we did get into that. I'd made a note that I thought it was more along the lines of renewable energy targets, but I do see we reference that later in the sentence.
She sort of, she made a list there.
Yeah, that's okay. I think the, that intro was pretty broad and spanned a wide spectrum of what that legislation encompasses, so. Excuse me. Then I just had a net on page four.
So nothing from the sheet?
Nothing there, no. I just had made some notes there. Right before item number seven, quarries and mining will be discussed. Past tense, that's all.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. That's all I had. Anything else? Hearing no voices. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are everybody voted right?
Yes.
Okay. Minutes of July 27th are approved. Next item on our agenda is disclosures relating to any potential conflicts of interest with respect to any agenda items. Anything to disclose? No hands, no voices. We'll move on to the next item, which is open to the public. Opportunity for non-agenda public comment. Seeing no one in the audience, we will move on to item number six, which is a discussion of the comprehensive plan. Tonight, we're looking to tackle three subsections, the first of which will be childcare. From there, we'll, I was going to possibly think about moving the rural area up if Sean is here and Gail, if the group's willing to accommodate them, if they're here. I tend to want to just not keep them until the end, so let's just play it by ear. If they come in, we'll just move it up. We can sort of go back and amend the agenda if we need to, but we'll go from childcare into, if they're here, the rural area, rural district discussion, and then from there, we'll, we'll jump into the energy section. So with that, Perry, I will, I will turn it over to you. The first section here is childcare. Perry's been gracious enough to take the lead on this one and has provided some comments and suggested changes, which everybody has a copy of, so we'll.
Thank you. Before I kick off on the childcare segment, I have been out for the last month and kind of dropped off very quickly, and for that, I apologize. On July 3rd, I found a lump in my left testicle. On July 4th, I was operated on and a seminoma was removed. One in 270 men have testicular cancer. It is the number one cancer for men aged 18 to 34. I turned 34 in November, so that's been fun. Had a CT scan. One of the nodes in my belly was slightly larger than all of the rest, and if it was to spread, that's where it would've gone, but it also could've been from the inflammation. So I have a PET scan tomorrow. If it's negative, I'm good. I'll do CT scans every three to six months for the next two years. If it's positive, I'm going to start chemo, four rounds, three weeks, one week on, two weeks off. So the next time we're here, I may not have my hair, but I plan to continue to come. The positive that I've been told by all of these doctors is that this is extremely curable, et cetera, and there's a 99% efficacy once you use chemo. So I look healthy, I feel healthy. It's been quite frustrating and upsetting, the thing I would say, for anybody that has children or sons or even yourselves, like, check yourself. I caught it very early, and so I'm not going anywhere. It's just, was recovering from the surgery and then was just kind of taking care of things, and then with the wife being five months pregnant, it was kind of all of those things together. So I just wanted to lay all that out. I'm much more educated now on the whole testicular cancer thing, and so, you know.
Serious stuff.
I can imagine.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Obviously, our thoughts are with you and your health before anything, so thank you for even attending and taking the time to do this on behalf of the town, and clearly, you know, your priorities are obvious, so to the extent things work out.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's all good right now, and if I do the stuff, I do the stuff, and we'll just continue on that way.
Great.
So moving on to the childcare section, what I attempted to do here was really tighten things up from the last iteration of this. I don't know if everybody was able to print out the latest kind of update. I worked on this this morning, but with a few things in the back of my mind, which are, as a town, this is much more at the kind of county or state level, and so my focus was just saying kind of, we want safe, affordable, and adequate childcare services for the residents of Shelburne and people that, that work in Shelburne. Some of the kind of recommended actions, I didn't know if this had occurred from the last time that the town plan went through, and I broke the goals into two parts, and I just kind of updated the objectives to really focus on this, that we as a town want there to be adequate, safe, affordable childcare. So with that being said, if anybody has objections to kind of the changes that I made, and then the area where I have questions for Dean is really on the recommended actions as to whether or not we can remove a couple of them and/or if we want to keep them, just to keep them.
Sounds good. Should we, probably makes sense, this is a short section, so why don't we try to do this in real time if the group's open to that? So it looks like we split it into two goals. That makes perfect sense to me. We deleted what here, specific topics?
So the specific topics, I moved down to objective three.
Okay.
Because I didn't, because that was just kind of put into a big mash at the top goal, and so I moved that into objective three.
Okay, good.
And then on that big paragraph, I took out some of the passive sentence structure and just tried to tighten it up.
Not, this isn't a comment on the content specifically, but in terms of format and structure, something, as I was going through one of the sections, when we have goals, like saying, like, you have integrate, I think a lot of our formats have like to integrate, but I imagine that once we get all the content together, we'll do a pass through the whole document to where we can align that sort of thing.
Yeah, that should be the sort of thing that you resolve in an edit, and someone will, the group will have to decide what, you know, if it's multiple ways, what's the way that you want it.
Yeah, I agree. It's a good pickup, though. I think it reads better this way, to be honest with you, but.
It, it does, and I was kind of flip-flopping on mine, and I just thought if anybody feels strongly one way or the other, we can just do it.
Just try and remove words that are superfluous.
Yeah, 100% with you on that.
Get it below 200 pages.
Yeah.
198.
Okay. Objectives, adequate and affordable.
I just had a comment about the recommendations, but it seems like you want to discuss objectives or?
I think I'm just looking at it right now. Did, so objective two is new, correct? Oh, no, that took the statutory, that took the goal language. Okay, just moved it down, is that right?
Pretty much, yes.
Encourage the creation. Is that wholesale new language there? I'm just looking at the old, the current plan.
No, it wasn't because the whole, the whole part about from small home daycare facilities to large daycare centers, I'm finding where I moved that from. So that was under the second objective, and I just kind of.
Oh, I see, yeah. Yeah, you rephrased that.
I rephrased it, and I, I took a piece of objective three and kind of combined it.
Uh huh.
Yeah, they copied from the footnote.
When we talk about infrastructure, what does that mean to people? Does that, to note, is that more like a facility?
So I didn't, I didn't change, I didn't change that because that came from the statute.
Right.
And so that's why I didn't mess with that language.
It's a good question, though.
I just don't know what it means, really. I think I know what it wants to mean, right? I think it's facilities, more locations.
It's more like a network of facilities, like so.
Infrastructure, more of a, okay.
Like a density question, like appropriately placed across the town, accessible.
Yep. Encourage a discussion of childcare financing.
I don't know. I don't mind the language here at all. I have a friend that has a small daycare. I don't know how many of you realize it, but small daycares are being driven out of business pretty much. I guess something like 400 have gone out of business already. The state has come up with these new regulations and, and last year, more than that, were wound out of business. So there is a need for larger daycares, I guess, because I don't know if it's intentional or what is going on, but I know people work really hard to build these small businesses, and it's a shame, in a way, what's occurring to them, and I don't know what we can do on our level.
And that's what we.
And that doesn't have anything to do with it.
And kind of the top paragraph where I left that, that portion from the prior plan, it basically says that we're very limited as a town in terms of what we can do, and that it should be the, you know, done at the state level.
Yeah, well, we do. I mean, in objective two, we reference encourage small home daycare facilities, right? Encourage the creation of, that addresses their goal, right?
Yeah, I have no issues with that at all.
Okay, good. So you support.
Yeah.
One, just grammatical. Childcare, I think we should just be consistent. If it's two words, it's two words. If it's one, it's one. If it's hyphenated.
So I read through this today, so my computer kept going back and forth because the British use it as one word, and the US English, it's one word or hyphenated, depending on if it's used as an adjective or a noun, and so.
Do you have a preference? Are you an Anglophile?
I have, I have no preference.
Okay.
It kept changing on my computer, and it became frustrating, so what, what you want as chair, you can go with.
I think you took the lead on this. If you have a preference, I will support it. I think we should just be consistent. I really don't have a view at all, other than let's make it one.
If we do all childcare one word, then we don't have to worry about the noun adjective issue.
Fine with that. Yeah, let's just.
C, H, I, L, D, C.
Two words.
R, E.
That's two words.
Google has spoken. We're Siri.
Sorry, I have a standard.
So Perry, you want it one word, right?
If he wants it, if that's what it says it's two words, it's totally fine, and just remove all the, the hyphens.
Okay. Let's reflect that in the edited version. We don't have to do it now.
So are we on the recommended?
We're on the actions.
Okay, so number.
You seem to have had a comment, too.
Yes. I just had, wanted to suggest a small amendment in the action number three, like, encourage the school district and, comma, Shelburne Library. So the library typically, if you look at the other towns, and also the recreational services, like the athletic center, these public service, public spaces typically in many other towns provide childcare so that parents can actually, it promotes the kind of like more exercise, but also more intellectual activity for the parents to kind of like engage in that while they have that facilities. So, and, and I think that's something that the town government can also think about that goes back to your earlier comment, like, it, it's kind of like depending on the town, like whether they want to facilitate that creation of kind of like childcare services in these public services where, like in library or athletic place, at least these are the two places which can really facilitate young parents to engage in those activities and not be kind of like confined.
So.
Does that relate to one of these actions, or?
Well, but so that was, so this is why I, I wrote the comments I did. I could not find where it talked about the state average daily membership reimbursement for preschool services, and so I don't know if that was from five, 10 years ago. Does it still exist? Because when I did some searching, it didn't look like it existed anymore, and so that's why I said we could remove this language.
It, it was a thing, for sure, and I don't know if it's been, I doubt that it's.
There is, so my understanding, just having gone through it personally, there is some kind of state funding mechanism for reimbursement for pre-K.
Right.
I don't know what it's called, honestly.
So maybe the language has changed, but this specific.
I think we should just confirm that. I think we should look this up. I think it may have taken on a new name, but I do think that exists, is what, if it's the same thing that I'm thinking of. I don't know if that's a reimbursement to residents, or if that's a reimbursement to providers.
I think it brings the.
It may be both.
The dollars to the community, so it would be, it's part of the funding mechanism for the preschool at the school, and I don't know how it works with the individual providers, but it brings additional dollars to the community. That's how I understood it back when this was done in 2011 or 12.
If it can be updated, we can update it with whatever the current program is, or just say to explore state and even federal options for supportive funding. Because we, I mean, if, if there's opportunities to get money from somewhere else, too, we don't need to limit it to the state.
To explore applicable.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just, I think one way to think of it is, is it's part of the state's emphasis on having education start early and get more kids who access it because it pays benefits later.
Right.
And so the financial incentive is provided to the providers so that they can offer their, either more services or their services at lower cost.
Right.
And I think it continues in some form, but we'll just have to find out what it's called.
Okay. Should we bracket that?
Sure.
For the time being, until we can confirm the, why don't we start at the top here? Review the zoning, would new zoning process has been addressed? If it has, we can remove.
Yeah.
So I, I think this one's more of an ongoing, as we just saw when we did this a few months ago.
There are other places where there is still a cap on the size.
Correct. So I think this is probably appropriate to leave as far as just to the extent there is a request or this resurfaces a similar issue. Probably appropriate to leave it as just a review, right? As appropriate whenever it presents itself, we'll, we'll entertain it, and I think it's Number two.
And actually, on that one and another, just comment on the overall documents. In some places, we refer to it as zoning ordinance, and in other places, we say zoning regulations.
And some others, we probably call them the bylaws.
The bylaws, right, right. So just something to stick in our heads for however we want to do that.
It's, it's both technical and stylistic, so if you want it to be all one thing, then my recommendation would be bylaws.
Yeah, let's do that. I think it should be one thing, because the readers of this, there may be some who pick that up, and it's just better to avoid confusion and be consistent.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Number two, periodically update the assessment of childcare needs and availability of childcare services in Shelburne.
So I wrote what I wrote because between the last plan update and this plan update, did anybody actually do this? I know that Dean was able to get that information.
Yes.
And so, do we want to leave that in just so that we kind of?
I think so.
You know, and then availability.
I think you want to leave it in for.
Is very different than affordability, right? I mean.
What I was thinking about, just as Dick made the comment about knowing someone who's got a small daycare and their numbers going down, you know, we could, we could map out the numbers over time, so that it may be obvious that in Shelburne, we're seeing the decline like everywhere else in the state, or maybe it's less, or maybe it's the reverse, but tracking that information, we could conceivably put in a table. You know, we haven't resolved the question of just how much of the kind of information we find in volume two might end up in the final volume, because if you go to volume two right now, there's quite a bit of that information. The information that was on your, your places tonight was what I asked for, that's just a snapshot in time, but we could look at it over time to get at some of those questions.
I see. Would this back up the late-breaking data that we received today? Would this typically be in volume two?
There's information like that in volume two.
Okay.
Yeah. Which we were supplied.
So volume two is more of an appendix, sort of support materials, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of the detailed information.
Have we, have we talked about, I know we spent some time on format, but have we talked about, do we want to continue that?
I, my understanding was is that you were looking at a single volume.
Which is fine, I think.
It's, it's a lot of material to update if you're going to try to keep it in anything like its current form.
Right.
As long as we're collecting this data, I think we can, when we get further into the process, we could probably make that call.
Yeah, I agree. I didn't have much time to spend on this, but I did find one of the trends was pretty interesting as far as how under three-year-old capacity, Shelburne is in a good place. If you look at that Shelburne childcare capacity by age, 1.02, so that subset means we're, we're in a good place, right? Above one, I think, means, correct me if I'm wrong here, some of our more astute statisticians are, three to five, this trend here where we're really low on, on the older children as far as capacity goes, I wonder if that, I was thinking, does that merit?
Does that mean we're old?
Language in here that might really emphasize the need for that demographic versus a new provider coming in and just building, you know, we're catering to under three-year-olds. That's all we do, and that's all we want to do because of X, Y, and Z.
Or a recommended action to support after-school programs?
Maybe. It just seems like there's a need here that maybe should tie back to a recommended action or something substantive. I didn't have a lot of time to look at this, so it just caught my eye that, that was an observation that they flagged, whoever prepared this.
Yeah, there was one of the edits that I just wanted to.
And is significantly under capacity in childcare for school agers, so.
So maybe the number two can be modified to reflect that.
I don't think the numbers can be too accurate because this is based on the 2010 census.
I see.
Well, that's just because they, they're, the census, like it or not, are the most reliable age-specific estimates of population that we have. When we get away from those census years, the age-specific numbers start to get really squishy.
Isn't there an update, though, periodically?
Well, there's something called the American Community Survey that is done, and it's really not, it aggregates numbers over multiple years, so it's, it's, I think for Shelburne, it takes three years to get enough counts, enough survey responses for them to give a number, and then you have to look inside the census to see just how much confidence that they have. So, yeah, there are other numbers, but they're, they're not considered as reliable as the census numbers.
From a planning commission perspective, though, these recommended actions do support that, reducing regulatory obstacles and encouraging school district and like the library and, and elsewhere to, maybe not just even exploring the, the state reimbursement, but just encouraging those, those entities to expand programs where, like for underserved age demographics?
Yeah. You think the language says that now? I like that, what you said. I mean, I want to try to be a little more.
Well, it's more putting a spin on three, or duplicating it, but less on the looking for reimbursement for services and more just to encourage those entities to, or be supportive of those entities in assisting underserved age groups. Because to Dick's point, I mean, the, yeah, based on the 2010 census, I mean, things are going to shift with people moving in and out and everything else.
Or we could just say.
Add the two.
Just add the two. I'm just doing this at the end, and encourage consideration of, what was, what were your words? Underserved.
It's more than two seconds ago. Childhood demographics.
Underserved.
Age categories.
Underserved age brackets.
So, am I hearing you say you would like to add another recommended action?
No, I'm thinking, since item two relates to this data, right? The idea is to sort of get, get a check on this data periodically and make sure that it reflects trends and check and adjust as appropriate, right? So what I was thinking was at the end of that sentence, just tack on and encourage consideration of underage, sorry, underserved age brackets. I think, I think we're maybe missing a word there, but something along those lines, and we can do this collectively on the words method.
So maybe like, and the availability of childcare services in Shelburne, comma, especially for underserved.
Especially for, I like that.
Especially for underserved age groups.
Right. Perfect. Thank you.
Group effort.
Concussion is key. Okay.
And you said age brackets, or was there another one?
This is.
We said underserved age brackets. What does it say?
This is age groups.
Age groups? Age groups, fine.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that.
Or age brackets, it's just.
So, so it's, I mean, I'm editing it live. Jason's got a computer. I just gave you a link to make sure that you could edit it, too.
He's not actually got a computer, it's just for looks. This is for the energy time.
I know, but you can now, you know, you can open up the other one.
I don't want to get in your way on this one.
So was it groups or brackets?
That's two groups.
Groups.
Okay, so review, we kept in two, we just supplemented three.
So one, you just changed ordinance to bylaws, right?
Yeah, we just made a comment. I don't know if we can reflect that, that we want to check the entire town plan and change it all to zoning bylaws.
In the number three, it would be great if you can add library there at least, but maybe athletic services as well. That's, I've seen that in Boulder, Colorado, I was there for my kids, and they had, that was a great service.
Yeah.
That the town provided.
I'm fine with that. I mean, what I, what I can share is I know that childcare within the library has been a discussion, I think, amongst the staff there and, and the trustees. I think it can become a bit of a, you know, it's not really designed right now as a childcare facility, and it somehow informally can become a bit of a childcare facility, so I think there's some conversation to be had there. I'm 100% fine with adding it. I hope it bring, when we get to the public hearing on this, I hope it brings people in to have that conversation, is what I would say.
Is it something where there may be enough difference of opinion on it that it would be easier to just have it as a separate item, rather than, you know, because it'll just call it out? Because if the, it's really not like these others. It's not providing the service already, really.
Yeah. I mean, I only know this because my wife was on the Pearson board, and it was something that was discussed at the board level of, you know, parents who just really use that as an aftercare without really.
But, but encourage.
Place is not designed as a childcare facility.
Yeah, I mean, it's being used informally.
Right, and I think that.
But library can benefit from some support.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that's what we have to sort of.
Because encouraging existing providers to go after this particular funding is one thing. It's different from encouraging the library, which is not providing the service efficiently to formally provide. to formally provide it. Oh, and then once they are doing that, then you could consider.
Exactly. Yeah, it's missing a step. First, they have to be a qualified provider, and then they can pursue reimbursement from the state. So a SEEM's proposal is to add a new recommended action to consider.
Well, encourage.
Or encourage.
Encourage public spaces or, like Shelburne Library and Athletic Center to provide daycare services.
Yeah. By Athletic Center, do you mean the school?
No, the.
The, oh, the gym?
Yeah.
Shelburne Field House?
Yes.
All right, so how do we do that without naming Pearson Library?
Facility, recreational facilities.
It seemed like there was, a couple of years ago, there was. Pushed to do that, and the business had to be a certain size where they couldn't, they just couldn't do it. And it seemed like there was a larger one that backed out, a larger company. I hate to say it. I think it was GMP, but I'm not sure. And that they weren't able to continue. Do they have a program now?
Where?
Green Mountain.
Oh, I don't know.
It was a large, it was a company that size. No, it wasn't Shelburne.
Yeah.
But it was a larger company, and the economics weren't, now maybe this ADM will make that difference.
I see what you're saying. Yeah, I mean, that's kind of a different topic, right? The, you're saying private companies?
Right.
I thought this already mentioned that.
But I wasn't aware of the ADM, how it worked. So maybe companies would be more apt to do it if there's some extra funding.
So two things. Let's figure out the library language. I think we can include that. I think it's a good time to actually have that conversation for the town, given that we're about to vote on a bond for a new library. I think it's appropriate. I want to just make sure we draft the language to reflect your proposal. And then if there's conversation, we can have it. Encourage use of public spaces such as the Pearson Library.
And you were saying recreation facility?
And recreational facilities, or if you want to name it, Shelburne Field House. But the idea is that, and they don't have to pay for it. It's more like they can let their space be utilized if they can, like.
The field house is not a public space.
No.
Okay.
It's not publicly owned.
So let's just keep it a library then.
Yeah.
Include the library if you say municipal, right? Because I thought that was why you couldn't get private donors to pony up the money for redoing the library.
But if we're looking in general, I mean, somebody mentioned like gyms and that sort of thing. So would it be generic enough to just to have encouraging after-school programs or summer programs that could help fill some of the gaps? Or could help offset some of the needs?
Is that what you were thinking? Or do you want to just make the focus be after-school?
Yeah, I think, well, I mean, if we were trying, unless we're fine with naming specific places, I think the library is good. It's a municipal asset, so to your point.
So just remove this section.
Well, no, I think.
Yeah, I think it's good to have it there.
I wanted to include it, I think.
I'm trying to think of how.
I think people may not appreciate that the library is a public space. I'd rather be clear about, yes, we're talking about maybe doing an after-school program at the library? Or is there support for that, or at least let's talk about it, right? Maybe that makes sense.
It seems like it's being used de facto anyways.
Right.
And it's kind of like burdening the library.
Yeah, so let's do it the right way, right? Have a conversation about it and figure out if that's a.
So you want to say formalized childcare service? I mean, is there any need to distinguish this informal use from formal use or formal service? Because the way this reads is it's like, hey, parents, bring your kids down.
I know, that's what I'm trying to not say.
So you want to say encourage the formal use of?
Well, or for formal childcare services or organized or something that is to distinguish it from this impromptu drop-your-kids-off use.
Yeah, and then the librarian will take care of them, so. Yeah, I mean, I think that's fine. If you want to add the word formal, there.
So just to throw it out there, if we were trying to be somewhat generic, to say something like encourage after-school and/or summer programs to offset any childcare gaps and explore support for locations such as the library or something along those lines to work in the concept of the library.
Yeah, I like that better.
So now I really think you have to start everything.
I like that. I like the exploring support for it because I think there is a.
You did get the link, right?
I did.
There he is.
Okay.
I don't think we've been saying stuff like and/or but.
No. We can, no. So with that addition, if there are no objections to Jason's proposal there, his amended proposal, can we call this section complete in draft form? Are there anything else, Perry, that you'd love to?
Are we leaving number four? We just didn't cover that one. I just didn't know what people.
Where's number four?
Just above.
Weird, yeah, skips a page there. This is your point. I knew I saw something in there. Let's talk about it. So this is the encouraged town employers. Do we have concrete examples of this happening?
Does that sound reasonable? Point five? Then I can get rid of.
It's clear.
At least to get the idea out there and then.
Yeah, to help bridge any gaps. I don't know, whatever. It sounds fine for now. Have we proposed any incentives at the town level?
I don't believe so.
Just because this has been here for five, eight years, one, do we even need this point at all?
Yeah.
And are we, you know, do we have the authority to even offer incentives? Or is this just something that seemed nice to put in the last go-round?
So this would, at some level, support authority to extend incentives, in my opinion? Am I wrong about that?
No, I think you're right, and we're also trying to demonstrate by having language in the plan that we're actually setting the stage to make some progress towards the goal. And I think the more ways that you have mentioned, the better off you are able to argue that you are. I don't think the Regional Planning Commission would ding the plan too much if it didn't have it, but.
Yeah, no, it's a good check, though, Perry, just to see, you know, have we done this? Has there been any encouragement or outreach?
Does the state inform individuals? Does the state advertise their program? The ADM?
Well, we have to figure out what it's called today, but I'm not sure.
Maybe these businesses aren't even, have no awareness whatsoever.
This is the kind of thing that someone like Bob Mason, who's just retired, would probably know forwards and backwards and sideways and could probably give us five minutes, and we would know more about this than we would ever need.
Yeah.
But we'll find the new, his replacement.
Oh, so we could say encourage and promote?
Where is that?
The new point five?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, as far as the substance of this, Perry, I would say that there are projects like the Shelburne Green project where there is childcare as a component. You know, did the DRB factor that in and give it, you know, did it get some points in some way? I'm not, I'm not sure, but, you know, maybe. Maybe that could have been something that the developer, you know, if this language is there, they could point to it and say, well, hey, you know, you know, you say I'm approaching some maximum, but you've got this plain language and.
Do we want to get rid of larger, larger employers? Would you say employers?
Yeah.
It only makes sense at a certain scale, which is why you're not seeing a lot of it, right? There's not, there aren't many large employers in Shelburne to begin with. I mean, a good example of why we might want to keep this in is American Meadows just moved into Shelburne. They're a relatively big business. And if we had a more structured or formal economic development arm within the town, that would have been a good opportunity to sort of engage with them and say, hey, interested in whether you might be including childcare in your programming? Or is there anything we can do as a town to help support that? Or is there any, are there any barriers to what you're trying to do here to help, you know, build your employee base? So that's why I think it's probably a good thing to keep in here with what we're trying to do on the corridor as well. I think it just aligns well with.
Especially as you're looking at form-based zoning.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it makes a ton of sense to keep it in. We haven't seen much of it, but that doesn't mean it's a reason to kick it out, so. All right.
Did anyone change before?
We.
You can just delete this stuff that I.
Right, yeah, we can delete that. Okay, good work. Thank you, Perry, for the efforts on that. Since we have three members of our esteemed Natural Resources Committee here, we had a conversation about moving you up in the agenda, which we will do since you are here, and we appreciate all of your efforts to help the town here and to provide input. So let's jump into the rural district. We have some comments from Sean that I'd like to talk about because I think it's a good, it's a good jump-off point because it's concrete and tactical, and some of these concepts are very big picture that we could spend a lot of time talking about and make some progress. But I'd rather address this while we have you here and try to get alignment and see if there are any concerns, and then plug it in if folks are happy. And then we can step back into some of the bigger picture, page-by-page work. So Sean had provided edits. Does everybody have a copy?
I didn't make copies of the one paper that Don had sent in. I didn't make copies of the material that Susan has done because it's in the draft. Actually, I did. I did end up making that, didn't I? Yeah, so if you have the future land use section, that's like 20, 22 pages I did.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Yeah.
So Sean's comments are on this page, but not in the big document. Susan's are in the big document.
Okay. So to orient page 21, I don't know if that is in our packet.
Well, page 21 is a map.
Objectives. Yeah, I think it's page 22, item four. Sean, do you want to walk us through your thoughts? Do you want me to just?
Sure.
Walk us through your comments? I'm happy to do either. We have you here, so I'd love for you to just.
Yeah, I suggested that language because in our retreat and then I think at the previous planning commission meeting, we had generally discussed, well, when we were talking about those core forest areas, those sections of the rural zone that we're trying to protect, at least from a natural resources perspective. But I know that from your perspective on the planning commission, you have some thoughts about that as well. There is a tension between some of the existing elements of the plan, especially with view sheds. But for some of the core features that we think about in our work, it's really important to try to take those away from the core areas and have them concentrated along the existing road networks. And I know that it, the devil's in the details, obviously, but as a guiding principle, I think my thought would be that we could include language that would suggest that where possible, we try to have the newer developments, especially the ones that are larger, be along the transportation corridors, especially considering that the ones that are likely to occur, that have occurred in the rural zone have very long driveways, isolated. That's habitat fragmentation.
Right, one-on-one.
Very clear example, so. It's a tough one because I realize that some of the value of the land in the rural zone is probably in high-end, large homes that are isolated from other ones. But again, from a planning perspective, you'd want them near the roads. So that's what I was thinking in that first element.
Yeah, I mean, I agree completely. I think, I don't think everybody on the commission now had the benefit of hearing Jens Hulkey, who spoke about parcelization, and we spoke about that at the retreat. And I know Kate and I, and I think others likely feel, we're very inspired by that conversation. And I absolutely support adding this. I agree with you. I think it could trigger a conversation, which is a good conversation to have, frankly. So the one comment I made is, instead of patches, I thought parcels might be a better word to use. But if Pat, you're the expert, if you think patches is core forest patches, is that the technical?
Yeah, I was trying to think more broadly, so not thinking about actual parcel boundaries, individual land ownerships, but the, those intact features of the landscape that we would like to keep intact. So if there's a core forest area, for instance, and that actually spans multiple ownerships.
Yeah.
It's tricky, but the goal would be to try to keep that intact across multiple ownerships. So that's why I use that term, but, you know, it's, you could write it a lot of different ways.
Yeah, yeah, no, I.
I don't know if you even need patches, because forest is indicative of a large section of woods. So it could be just core forest, should get the message.
Or if we wanted a word, yeah, continuity.
To protect core forest. I just don't think, I don't know if you.
Yeah.
The term contiguous forest is a hot term, I think, where you're trying to.
I'm good with whatever we want to call it, yeah.
Of an important size.
No, I'm not wedded to specific terminology either.
Yeah, I don't have a strong view either.
The only reason, from a landscape ecology perspective, we would use patches is that in the Champlain Valley, they are mostly patches. So there's not a lot of really contiguous forest. But for, if we're confining our focus, in this case, on Shelburne.
And it's sort of, to your point, steps you out of the political boundary, lot-line mentality into more of a macro.
But again.
I like that, yeah.
Completely flexible, and the key point is try to preserve those core areas to the extent possible.
Any, how do people feel about this addition? Should weigh in if they're.
I like it, and as a follow-up to the retreat we did where we saw that fantastic document, do we have a sense of, when we talk about the core patches of forest or the really important contiguous piece of wildlife, do we have a sense of how much acreage that is? Because I remember we talked about the Conservation Fund, and we discussed briefly utilizing that document to lever private sector money to where you could say, these are the parcels we're trying to buy. They're important for X, Y, Z reasons. We only have X amount of dollars, you know, for every dollar we put up, can you match 50 cents a dollar, $1.50? And getting that document in front of some of the conservation folks who have done quite well in business. And I'm just curious, like, how much acreage are we talking? It's really, really, really important to prevent from development.
We didn't calculate those numbers, but we could very easily because we have that notable wildlife habitat map now with those core forests, the edge forests, et cetera. We could very easily calculate those numbers and provide them to you. And we did not summarize those in the Open Space Plan, but for other purposes, we certainly could.
Sean, would there be an easy way to add to that map? Areas that are not developed that would be key to link? an easy way to add to that map areas that are not developed that would be key to linking those sections, patches?
It's, it's somewhat subjective. So the, the, if you recall from looking at the map, the, the map does have approximate wildlife corridors. Wildlife will go over every inch of this town, but the question is, where would they prefer to be and where, where would they be safest for their life histories? And without a, a lot of very extensive field effort, we're, we're forced to, to make some assumptions about those. So the, again, the map does provide an estimate for the, the important corridors. If we, we wanted something a little more tangible or something a little more defensible, I should say, we, we could contact Jens Hilkay.
Yeah, I wonder, could we, could we turn that into a, a recommended action as far as just pursuing grant funding to really get into that data? Because we talked about this when Jens was here, these, these pinch points, right, where they're very vulnerable. And how do we sort of prioritize protecting what we need to there? Because once it's gone, it's gone, and you no longer have that corridor.
Yep.
So one thought might be, do we try to make that an action, right? Since we don't really have the data now, is there a way, is it just a, a dollar issue and time and, and resource to put against it, or?
It is possible to find some grant money. Dean probably know better than me, but I, I know that probably a decade or so ago now, Williston performed a, a new wildlife habitat analysis. And as, as part of that, the reason I know this is my office helped with that, and we, we did some actual corridor modeling. So it is, it is possible to, to lend more quantitative specificity to it. It's, it, it is a question of money, and then it's also a question of, of what, what that will ultimately tell you. So the, the reason that we did not pursue that type of formalized and quantitative modeling for the open space plan was that we just didn't really have the time, and we didn't have the, the funds, or we, we didn't have the time to pursue the funds. So that's why we took more of the qualitative approach. But it's certainly as a, as a recommendation as part of the town plan, you could suggest that the, the town pursue funding, grant money to formalize an assessment of, of the, the important wildlife corridors in, in Shelburne. It, it's, there was a, a tracking group in town some years ago, Shelburne Tracking, and what they do is very good. It's, it's just, it's not statistically defensible. It's some folks going out on the landscape and taking observations. It's, it's interesting information and it's helpful information. But if you're looking for a, a, a statement of statistical robustness, you'd, you would need to, you know, have some folks come in and, and really do a, you know, the, the correct study design. And now that, that's another question of, of intent.
As far as the idea of, of something like that being a recommended action, I said this last time, I think, some of these things might better drop into the natural resources chapter than the future land use chapter, or if you're still not quite sure how you would want to word it.
I don't know where it goes. I'm indifferent to where it goes. It seems logical to keep it tied to this section when we're talking about wildlife corridors, but if it's better suited to natural resources, let's move it there. Let's just try to anchor around that idea. Is there support for developing that kind of recommended action? If so, we'll figure out where to put it.
I mean, just to glance ahead at the recommended action, I mean, we could, we could look for a place for it and, and sort it in the land use section.
Yeah. I, I mean, this is just me speaking. So if there are others who don't like that idea, then speak now or later. But I, I definitely think we, it'll help us, the whole idea of these recommended actions is to help us prioritize what we're doing here. So when we see something like that, that will help when we're looking at agenda setting or more work plan, is another area where, you know, there's, that's the perfect thing to help motivate moving things up and down, that ladder, when we think about our work plan annually. So I'd be in favor of adding that.
Some of the work that I've done in Africa, typically, they promote like, to facilitate like wildlife agricultural interface or the evolution of those interface. They really want to look at like the core areas, but also the buffers around those and look at the ecological connectivity with those kind of like quantitative approaches you are pointing out. So I think we should probably recommend something like that as the development pressure is increasing in the rural wildlife interface. You know, it's, it's encouraged that we can like have more ecologically sound criteria to carve out core and buffer zones, and maybe a study can be conducted along those lines. I think that might be more, a better approach with established criteria as opposed to just subjectively identifying that this is a core area and this is not, and that, that could lead to some conflicts.
I agree, yeah. I mean, another, just because Perry brought it up, and I agreed at the retreat that it was a great idea, is what he just mentioned. Like, why shouldn't that be a recommended action?
Yeah.
Right? Like, there should be some language in the plan that says, let's seek resources to print pretty copies of the open space plan so that we can activate, leverage for, you know, potential donors and contributions to the open space fund, right? Like, that's a real action that we can put money against in a budget. Putting it out there because we, we have these ideas that come up in our bullet points and then go away. So if we want to put that in, I'm all for putting that in too, because now's the time to just put all these ideas into one place. And so I would, would others agree with that? Is that an action that?
Yeah.
Okay. I think we should sketch that in too.
So.
Because it's a really good idea that I think a lot of people could get around and would say, how come we didn't think of that before?
So if we're bumping down to the recommended actions section of the land, rural land use piece, we've had some comments about mapping, but how do you want to word?
What I just said, Perry's idea?
How do you want to word it?
Seek resources to make copies of the open space plan to seek donors?
Yeah, it's a good start. Seek resources and.
What about pursue grant money to formalize assessment of important wildlife corridors in Shelburne? You said something about buffer zones?
Yeah, so on the wildlife corridor modeling, I jotted down, consider pursuing grant funding to formalize an assessment of important wildlife corridors. Those are Sean's words, not mine. I just wrote them down.
So just, again, more slowly, because my typing skills are not.
Consider pursuing grant funding to formalize an assessment of important wildlife corridors.
And that's a recommended action?
That would be a recommended action.
Could money from the Conservation Fund be used to print a limited amount of those for very targeted individuals?
My sense is that, at this point, the, the open space fund is so limited that, um, that might not be the best resource to use because it could, in fact, eat up some of the funds that we would need if, if another property were to become available. I don't know, do you two agree with that? And right now, the fund is designated to be used for the conservation of land and, and not for other property, other, other activities.
Yeah.
The other issue that should be mentioned on the printing of open space plans, it's always more economical to print a large quantity, so your per, per unit price is low as opposed to, well, let's print two or three right now for an effort here. It'd be exorbitant doing that.
I think we're thinking a couple hundred, right? Is that how many we did? Yeah. I mean, it would be a very select targeted list where you'd want to make that investment.
And then we started copying them ourselves, and they were a lot less attractive. But it showed how poor we were.
Right, which is why we want to.
I think we had an initial quote for ten to twelve thousand dollars, copying.
For how many?
I forget the, the number, but.
Yeah.
In, one of the former committee members was knowledgeable about printing, she's a graphic designer, and given the, the economies of scale, that, you know, the, the minimum you could do, I seem to recall, was four or five thousand dollars. So it's, it's pricey with a, a document like that. That's why, at least initially, we're, we're focusing on the, the web presence with the open space plan, but.
Definitely. Yeah, yeah, no, I know. This, this thought was more of a, you know, as budgeting season comes in, and if there's a select board that's receptive to the idea, and whoever it is, right, that, that's advocating for this is able to convince the powers that be, then at least it's anchored in a policy statement. Seek the last one, seek resources for printing of copies of the new.
Instead of focusing on printing copies, maybe we just say to, um, something along the lines of to further.
Disseminate?
Yeah, disseminate the, the information in the open space plan, just something so that more people are aware of the document.
Yeah.
I, I think that's a really good suggestion, because one thing that we've been meaning to do on our committee, and we just haven't gotten around to it, is actually producing our, our own webpage that would be accessible from the town webpage, that would have all the documents that we routinely consult and have links to information about the various properties and recreation information. So that's, from, from a larger perspective, I think disseminating the open space plan, whether it's with printed copies or.
Whether it's physical copies or digital.
Making it aware to the, to the town.
Okay, good. I think that's fine for now. We're going to revisit this section so we can fine tune, but at least the concept's down.
Not, not to go crazy, but if we had one, I don't think it's covered with exploring incentives to protect that phrase of core forest patches, large agricultural fields and wildlife movement corridors. And I'm thinking things like maybe partnering with Vermont Land Trust to find property owners that say, hey, maybe I've got twenty acres and ten of those acres are continuous forests that link other places, so let's protect that. You still own it, but it's Vermont Land Trust protected. Those types of things, unless there's something that I missed.
Uh, I mean, that's what those guys do. VLT is the one that's coming to landowners in the town, right, to sort of identify those types of parcels. Is your suggestion more along the lines of partner with organizations like that to support?
Yeah, I, I was keeping it generic just to explore incentives, because this, this is the plan that would be used when we're looking at bylaws and that sort of thing. And if we're, if we're re-examining zoning rules and like DRB approval processes and that sort of thing, just being able to add in a consideration, check in with this organization as part of that.
Yeah, I like that. Is that notion anywhere in the, the plan?
Uh, I think it might be.
Yeah, it sounds sort of familiar, but I'm not.
There is a, a section in the open space plan, I think it's called landowner outreach, which has similar ideas. So it.
Partner with local conservation organizations to.
That's right, and try to develop relationships with landowners. Obviously, any type of conservation deal involves a, a willing seller. So there are no pressure tactics, nothing like that. So it's, it's really a question of getting people interested in, in conservation, because ultimately, the, the landowner holds all the cards.
Right. Could we just copy and paste the open space plan language into?
There's also language in our, our charge or bylaws or whatever they're called.
Yeah, I wonder if we can look at that.
Only with willing landowners. But one of our charges is to do outreach and education.
I wonder if we could just leverage the open space plan language and tack it into.
Absolutely.
A recommended action. Okay, we will. We have enough to get through here.
I just had a comment about number eight, like where you're, if you can go back to, so consider pursuing grant funding to prepare an ecological assessment to identify kind of like core wildlife corridors. I mean, this would be the more specific goal for that ecological assessment would be to kind of like come up with a map where you identify the core areas and where the buffers are, as opposed to leaving it a little bit vague. It's just kind of like making it more specific, like are you going to use some kind of like Markal model or some kind of model to kind of like identify how you, like where the core areas are, so you can come up with a more tangible, deliverable. That would help the planning commission to identify, like, these are the areas that we really want.
I mean, that's what I understood it to be. I'm definitely not, that's not my area of expertise. I, I understood it to be, let's try to find a data-driven way to sort of model these corridors that reflects reality versus, I'm not saying yours isn't, but you've admitted that it's, it's somewhat.
It's more expert opinion rather than
Right, yeah.
actual field data-driven.
Yeah.
It seems, that, that's a good point. We have done some of the mapping, actually, with the, we haven't done any, any type of ranking of the core areas, but we have mapped them as part of the new open space plan. But we, we could certainly incorporate more generic language that really describes where we're looking at, at the, the ecological contiguity of the landscapes in town.
Right, that's exactly what I meant in terms of the ecological connectivity, because that's really the key in terms of the conservation.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I'd love to.
And that would transcend forest areas, and it could also speak to, or tell me if I'm wrong, would it also speak to prime agricultural land or waterways? So it would transcend just a forest corridor?
The, the modeling?
Yeah.
If we were to pursue that? Yeah, I mean, I guess we could. If, if that supports the goal of.
I'm not about to, I'm going to Sean to speak to how viable that is as an idea.
That, that's a good question. I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, certainly, the, typically with field studies, people would, would be out actually conducting studies on the ground. But when, when Jens was here, he, he pointed out, I think it was the planning commission meeting, that we were not considering, or we did not include the, the water-based
Right.
roots of, of movement, other than we, we included stream corridors, but not Shelburne Pond. That was his, his primary concern in, in looking at the, the wildlife corridors, the so-called wildlife corridors.
Okay, let's keep going through your comments here while we have you. Back to recommended actions. You had added a new first bullet under item two.
Yes, so I, because we, we have done some mapping, I, I was thinking that we, we should use it where possible. So I, I did take a look at the existing wildlife maps. I forget what the exact name in the, in the comprehensive plan, but it, it looked like it, it could benefit from the specificity that the, that the open space plan map provides. So I'm not sure exactly how they would be combined, but it would be nice if, if that information is ultimately part of the, the comprehensive plan as well.
No debate there, right? If we have. Okay.
So would we, going over to the dean's copy, would we just replace?
What page is that on? I was just looking at Sean's.
Recommended actions, it's twenty, twenty-five. Two.
Yeah, I think we would just add a new bullet, right? I think he's saying, just add a new first bullet with his language, update the, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And this would just be added on top of it. And this would just be added on top of it. Okay, and then the last addition, Sean, was in the third bullet, right? Specify subdivision process.
Yes, there was a bullet that described the subdivision design process. And again, that's a tricky one. How do we incorporate some of these landscape ideas into the plan? That's why I thought perhaps some reference to a wildlife habitat overlay could be inserted. It was part of one of the previous plans, not the most recent one, but maybe two cycles ago. And I don't remember the discussion at the time why it was removed. And I'm not suggesting that I know exactly what it would look like, but it seems to me that if we're trying to develop some type of formal process for reviewing these landscape elements, then perhaps this is one way to jumpstart that. Because I think there are towns that do have the so-called wildlife habitat overlay, so it's not an entirely new concept. It might be that we can gain some insight from other towns and see how they do that and perhaps adopt it. And I did include the language "consider" because, again, I don't know exactly what it would look like, but at least thinking about what sort of mechanism would satisfy these goals of protecting the core areas.
Great. I like it.
I really like that concept as well. I think during Jens's presentation, we asked about that and he said that it generally doesn't work very well. But I'd certainly still like to explore it, because I can't mentally rationalize how it wouldn't. Not to say that he's wrong, I just, I think it's worth pursuing.
Yeah, and my understanding, not being an attorney, is that whatever happens with some type of overlay district, we need tangible information. So the, I think there's a reference to the JAM golf decision somewhere in the plan. And again, my limited understanding is that in that case, the court basically determined that a town couldn't simply say, well, we have to protect habitat here. We actually have to do some type of job in delineating those features that would be important to protect. So if we're going to develop some type of design process, we have to call it something. So again, thinking that this is at least a starting point for discussion.
Just, this is coming in a bullet that has been edited by at least two other people, Kate and Susan. And it's really leading off with the conservation subdivision process. So I was just gonna suggest removing the word "for example," because I don't know that it works the way that this paragraph is structured. And would you wanna consider saying in addition to the Sean's words and then use that overlay as part of the conservation subdivision design process, since that's what the bullet's about?
Yeah, exactly. I think that's kind of the logical conclusion there, right?
I think that, yeah, that would be our goal, but I think to not pin ourselves in a corner that if we have that overlay district defined and there's data backing it up that could be actionable, then that is something that could be leveraged by going to property owners, looking to sell or to subdivide or something to say, hey, here's the analysis that's been done. If we're not able to enforce an overlay district in zoning, and I think that was Jens's point, where the complications came in, that at least we could use that to facilitate conversations to hopefully get the same outcome.
I just have a clarification question about the roads, the backroads that are built to provide access to these houses in these kind of like subdivision, like in those dangerous areas. So who kind of really regulates the authorization of these backroads, like class, whatever? Department of Transportation has different classes of roads, right? My understanding was that some of those roads were under the purview of the town government in terms of like the backroads. And they're the ones which basically really start the habitat fragmentation process. And then that leads to the houses and other kind of process. So can we like maybe utilize some regulatory power over the, kind of like the roads? That might be, if somebody's trying to build those roads in the core areas that come out of this assessment study, they need to go through some more detailed assessment or like process, in terms of permitting process or something.
Yeah, I'll let Dean respond to that one.
So if you look at this map, this is a map showing the public highways. So it includes the state highways, like Route seven and Route 116, and all the town highways.
Right.
So these are public ways that the town has a role in maintaining. There are many more roads that are not these public highways that are in places like Shelburne Farms and elsewhere in the town. Off of both these highways, public highways and streets, and the private roads are driveways. And so what I'm not sure I'm understanding is if you are talking about the driveways or about the private roads. Because the fact of the matter is, is that there aren't many private roads built. People just, they don't build them haphazardly because they're expensive. So the roads that we see are pretty much what we will get unless someone is going through a development process and creating a subdivision, and in that case.
Yeah, that's what I meant from the creation of the subdivision and like driveways are part of that, but also for access, if somebody's trying to like really cut down the forest and put in that rural area a house or multiple houses, then roadways are the first thing that they build.
A brand property, um, not hospital, are you guys still?
Driveways are definitely an important consideration, even, probably especially in the rural zone because of the five acre zoning. We see really long driveways. In some cases, I wouldn't say exactly what they are, but they can be parallel to an existing driveway that accesses the neighbor's house. So obviously, there's no planning there. And that is an artifact of the large lot zoning. So it's definitely a double-edged sword there.
Is there a way that we can write something into the plan that would eventually become more regulatory, that would prevent that from happening? That would kind of force people to use a common road drive until they get closer to their own home? I mean, we've recently reviewed at least one request for a new permit that was creating a parallel road or a road that sort of went around as opposed to using the existing road to be able to get to the new property.
Yeah, I think that concept is included in the conservation subdivision.
To some degree it is, yeah.
But does it regulate?
You would, the conservation design process starts with the identification of the resources. And then after you've identified the resources, you look for the building sites and the road that would connect the building sites. You know, so you've mapped out the sensitive areas. There is some clustering that you can do as part of the conservation subdivision design, and you can also require it as part of the PUD process. There are different tools that you can use that force the lots to be clustered together.
That's exactly what I was going with this, it's kind of like looking at some of those kind of like approaches that, kind of like, so it's just not like a mapping exercise, whether that map actually gets implemented in a meaningful way.
Yeah, I mean, the thing that everybody needs to remember is that in our zoning regulations right now, in the rural district, there, anytime someone is doing a PUD, it has to go through this conservation subdivision. If it's a major subdivision, I should say. It has to have this initial step where there's an informal meeting and the focus is on the resources. Now, does it, is it so specific and so absolutely clear that people will do exactly what everybody wants? No, and there's gonna be a profit mode that.
That's why we've talked a lot about enhancing the conservation subdivision.
Yeah, that's what this says, it says refine that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Which is, we spent time on that sort of next generation conservation subdivision materials. And that was really what we wanted to reflect was let's move from current state to this next generation of conservation subdivision planning. And I think that would really pull in a lot of what you're talking about there is just a little more rigor. I think, based on what I've seen.
Yeah, I mean, there are.
If we went down that road, no pun intended.
It can be complex, or you can keep it simple and have requirements that will do essentially what you want, but people won't necessarily be happy with the lack of flexibility.
Right.
You know, you could basically say, it must be a PRD, so it must be, you detach lot size from the density. And you can also then set maximum lot sizes for the residential lots, so that's further constraints. You can have contiguity requirements so that you're not gonna see the lots scattered. They're gonna have to all be connected, and that's gonna reduce the road distance and things like that. But on the other hand, the developer's gonna say, oh, it's gonna mean all, I've got this beautiful rural property and people will wanna live there, but you're telling me I've gotta make tiny lots and all the houses have to be close together. And that's not necessarily what they're gonna see the market as.
Well.
But you can put those things in the regs. We don't have them there now, and I think that's what this refining is.
Exactly, that's what that bullet is trying to get at, is refine the current conservation subdivision. Yeah, and this segues well into Kate's comments that I think everybody saw in the memo. She wanted to remind people of a few things here. And Sean, thank you. I think we're through your comments. Very much appreciate the input here and.
Great, well, thank you. It's a great discussion.
It is, yeah, no, more to come. So let's, since we're on really the Kate, I think Susan also had weighed in on that.
Susan had made edits in different places. She had made some edits back on July 25th, so this was a while ago, that were in sections other than the rural. But if we wanna just focus on the rural, we find her.
Did we already look at Susan's comments to the?
To the, I think there was.
To the growth area too?
There was some discussion of it in the abstract, but I don't know that it was actually seen in the text.
I don't think we did see them.
So do you wanna go back or do you wanna stick in the rural?
Uh, let's stick in the rural, since we're making some progress here.
So her comments started with, whoops, she's, well, she's made this suggestion about the map. Can conserve lands be separated into their various types?
Which page is that? Is that 22?
Uh, that's page 20, 20 says it is in this document. So that's a map comment. Then that's Kate's comments, then her.
That the map be separated into what? What was the comment?
She wants the, she would like the conservation areas subdivided. So the old map.
That's map four, right?
It was, whoops.
Where is the actual comment?
Oh, it's on the Google Doc. You're not seeing it enough.
So it's, yeah, it is, she was just suggesting that those be. And in some of this, in this old map series, they were aggregated just to keep them relatively simple because you had village, surrounding area, rural, then all together. I mean, so that was that. But I'm looking for the text comments that she made, and those show up. Okay, starting here. Where are those? My apologies. Okay, so, so yes, this is where we had the multiple kitchens and cooks in the kitchen.
Yeah.
So add and minimize impervious, so she was making comments about stormwater in several places. So she had added this and minimizes impervious surfaces and promotes green infrastructure piece.
For the conservation subdivision?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Are terms like green infrastructure defined somewhere?
So that they can have a little more heft?
Yeah, I think there are very clear definitions in the.
I don't think there, but I don't think within the plan we really.
There's a glossary in the plan like that.
Yeah. I mean, it's an interesting point, I wonder.
That could be a good exercise to tack on to the end, add a glossary.
So the thing we do, I mean, we define terms in the bylaw, is sort of the approach, right, Dean?
The bylaws.
The bylaws have defined terms, the town plan doesn't. This is, although some of this seems tactical, it's somewhat high level, right? It's sort of the top. I wonder, you know, if and when we got to the point where we were jumping into developing and refining the conservation subdivision. I think at that point, then it makes sense to really zero in on a definition, for example. If green infrastructure may, maybe something that certain applicants take liberties with, then it would make sense to make it a little tighter. I don't know, what do others think? I'm hesitant to really get into defining terms in here because it could be an endless circle of where do we stop? That's all.
So one of the other comments she made or proposed edits was to change, continue to support to increase support for the conservation fund?
Mm-hmm.
Which probably should say open space fund.
Yes, let's call it what it is.
She also. I can't be, that's just, that's what she did? I thought she had done more, but we're getting to the end of the document.
Okay, well, I wanted to make sure we talked about her comments and she took the time to contribute to the process here, which we appreciate. Let's see. I know we're ping-ponging a little here, but we're making progress, so I'm trying to think about the best way to, do we start back? I know Kate had wanted to talk about a couple of things. Some of them are conversations that will take us multiple meetings to get through, including the notion of transects. You know, at what point do we start taking a step back and thinking about, are there transitional areas in the rural district that might merit a different approach, really, kind of subsections? We can start that conversation, we can seek the group's input here since we have you. We definitely won't complete that conversation since it's pretty complex and we definitely need more preparation around it, I think, from Dean and to educate ourselves a little bit before we start spinning too many wheels. But I think it's probably a good time just to think about, you know, your initial reactions to that. We have you here, is that a concept that you think we should spend some time on as part of this process? Or, I know Kate's an advocate for it. We've introduced the idea in multiple ways, whether it was conversations about Air Park Road, you know, sewer-related type conversations with expanding the sewer service area. And it really ties in naturally to that conversation. I think it's also reared its head in a few other topics, developable area, things like that, that. I'm open to having the conversation, I think it's a good one to have. I think Kate, when she's back, she can definitely help lead that conversation. I think there's, there's also a, another side of that conversation that really would not want to touch that with a 10-foot pole for a lot of reasons. Because as soon as you start touching it, then everything's fair game, yeah. So, it's something for us just to think about as a group, and, Dick, I don't know, I, I think we've spent many meetings talking about this. So, I, I know.
As far as spanning the sewer district.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm guessing you probably have some thoughts on this, since you're.
I think the one major issue for me on, on that section is stormwater is huge. And I live on the river, and I, I've seen it change, I've been there 35 years. And for instance, today, the river is higher, it used to be in the summertime, it was three feet wide, and eight to 10 inches deep, it's now 15 to 20 feet wide. And every time it rains, it, it doesn't go up an inch or two anymore, it goes up eight, 10 inches. That storm we had the other night, it was up about eight or 10 inches. And to develop an area that is incredibly wet, such as that airport road section, is just going to increase runoff. And there's no place to retain it, because the ground is saturated. So, that is why I oppose going into that with, you know, granted, sure, we could put sewer in there. And if we could put sewer in there without changing the density, I think it's probably a great idea. But to change density there, I think is foolish to, to put more impervious surface in there. That's, that's my whole argument.
I guess, just to step you back a little bit, what do you think about the idea of just exploring transects, right? Do, do we want to spend time, are there certain, not only airport road, but there are probably other areas that might.
I don't understand the concept.
Look a little bit differently, or that might have different attributes or sensitivities, or.
I think.
Reasons why we might want to maybe downzone versus.
It's a much larger conversation.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
From a plan perspective, it would be putting in a recommended action of investigate that.
Yeah, I, and that's what I'm trying to tease out, is, you know, this is Kate's suggestion that we should talk about it, and she'll be back in September at our next meeting, so we'll continue this conversation. But I just want to get a sense of, directionally, is this a topic that we should spend a little time on and try to make some concrete progress on? Or is it just, even if it's developing a recommended action to explore this, right? Like, is there support for that?
To me, at this point, it would just be a recommended action.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, we're not going to solve the problem as part of this process.
Right.
Did, did you have a comment?
Yeah, one, one suggestion might be, in the rural area, to do some study to find the areas where the grounds support more community septic outside of the sewer district. That might be those areas where some clustering, or that kind of a thinking might, might blend well.
You read my mind, because I, I think when there were some residents from that area who came in, the comments that were made is that there were some septic systems in a bit of disarray and that sort of thing. So, that, that is certainly a, seems like a viable approach.
Okay.
I just want to say one thing about the green infrastructure, and that's kind of like, that includes these kind of bio-retention ponds and constructed wetlands, and so, like, you can have, like, standard conventional sewer technologies, like these kind of septics, but you can also have more green infrastructure kind of technologies. But then, the trade-off there is between the land allocation for constructed wetland and bio-retention pond that will absorb all that water that's coming with more and more rain and wetness in the northeastern US. So, kind of like, that's definitely a planning question, is like, do you want to promote more bio-retention ponds and constructed wetlands as a way to absorb that excess water that's coming in the system? And kind of like, that also absorbs the nutrients, and that has implications for water quality in the lake as well.
It's a great idea, but the retention ponds for that property would have to be on someone else's property.
Right, right, it has to be a, it has to be a town plan part.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's tied in with the stormwater utility discussions, but also the water quality acts that's been just recently implemented last year.
Yeah, good point.
And again, good, good things to put in for a recommended action. I, I don't know if the technology supports it, but if, if a community septic system could even have a methane collector on it or something similar.
Right, well, biodegesters would actually have a good triangulation with the energy conservation, as well as the, some of these other runoffs, because these nutrients are running off from the farms, and that's a really huge issue.
I, I just wanted to point out that the, the figure that, that Dean has, has posted here is, in, in many ways, what I, I would personally conceptualize for the wildlife habitat overlay district. And if you, if you think of Shelburne, and the comparison's not exact by any means, but if we, we look at Shelburne from west to east, or at least from the Route 7 corridor, we, we have the urban core, we have the, the growth area one, the growth area two, the rural zone, and then a little, little further east, we, we have Shelburne Pond, which is, is mostly a conservation district. It's not labeled as such, but nonetheless, I, I think that when we actually get into, or we get to the point where we can discuss a, you know, the, the possibilities of establishing some type of overlay district, or whatever it's called, conceptually, the, the transect idea is, is pretty fascinating. The question again would be how to encapsulate those elements into some type of definable subdivision regulation. But it's certainly a very interesting start for a discussion, I think.
I think step one, and here we go again, is wetlands, a wetlands map. And it's something that would give us an indicator of what we can do on different parts.
We have wetlands maps?
No, I don't think we have, I don't think we have an updated wetlands map.
Yeah. Wasn't there an application for a grant to do something around that?
Um, we didn't get the grant because. Yeah.
For some reason, we couldn't put the grant in for that request, I'm not sure what it was.
Is that right?
Yeah, what was?
Or it didn't get selected.
No, there was something, some reason it wasn't eligible.
All right, so why don't we, why don't we bracket the idea of, you know, when Kate's back, we'll, we'll try to develop some, or at least continue the conversation around the transects, and maybe that becomes a recommended action, maybe it doesn't. But at least let's, let's continue the conversation at that point. I think there's, there's general support, and if it's just a recommended action, then it, it doesn't really, I don't think it becomes that toxic, or at least controversial of an issue. Maybe it does, I think we'll see when we get to a public hearing, but.
I, I was just going to add, actually, that for, for wetlands, this new map that we created for the open space plan probably is the, the best assessment of wetlands that we, we have now in town. Not from a statutory perspective, they're not, they're, they're not field verified, but from at least ecological perspective, we included areas that are, are known to be important ecologically. So, just a plug for that map, again, not from a regulatory perspective, but from a.
But another opportunity to leverage some work that was done, and, and update a map that may be a bit dated or require some updating.
I don't know if it's appropriate in this section of the plan or not, but one, one of the things that we've been talking about in relation to some of the properties that we've reviewed in the last year, has to do with requiring the input from hydrologists, geologists, depending on the appropriateness to a piece of land, and perhaps being able to require it in such a way that the town names who the person is. So that you're not just getting the engineers who are representing the developer to tell you that this land can certainly handle the water that's going to flow through it. Is that, is that something that's more regulatory, or is that something that's more conceptual? We, we've talked about that in some of our meetings.
There are certain requirements for people who design erosion control plans to have a particular credential. So, that idea has been used in the regs before. It, it could certainly be refined.
But that would be regulatory, as opposed to?
If, well, I'm just using that, I'm just pointing out that the regulations right now do have instances where there's a requirement for a specific credential. The idea being that if someone has this erosion control specialty, they're the kind of person the town wants preparing the erosion control plan, rather than someone who might have, you know, been trained in a related, you know, civil engineering field, but doesn't do this all the time.
Yeah, similarly with, with somebody who has a background in forestry, as opposed to a landscaper, which is something that we've dealt with before, where a landscaper has been the one who's determined whether certain trees can be removed, as opposed to somebody who, who really has a background in forestry. So, looking for that kind of credentialing, I think, could help in avoiding some of the debacles that happen when we approve a development in good faith and find that something other happens.
Yeah.
And as far as the plan goes, that would be something where we'd just need to add in a recommended action to shore up that language in the bylaws, I would imagine.
You could, yeah, I mean, it could be, you know, there, the recommended actions having to do with land use often break down into, you know, change the zoning regs to address these things, change the subdivision regs to change these other things. I think that it's the sort of thing that you'd want to see in both the zoning and the subdivision regulations, but it sounds like you're saying, consider ways to implement, to revise the zoning and subdivision regs so that, you know, the appropriate professionals are used. And, and it sounds like your interest is primarily stormwater, or starting with stormwater, or?
I was thinking, it could be geologists, it could be, it could be foresters, it could be wildlife.
But what's the part of the regulations that they're giving the more informed opinion on than just a straight civil engineer?
I'm not sure I'm following.
Well, so, we, we want, we want credentialed professionals, we, who, yeah. We want credentialed professionals to be participants in the land use process. But right now, we don't say to a developer, other than, you'll need a survey, and person, two types of people, prepare for surveys, surveyors and civil engineers typically.
Yeah.
But you're looking for other experts to be involved in the process.
I am.
And so, we would just need to amend the regulations so that we call for the certain, preparation of a certain type of plan, and we say that only certain types of people can prepare them. So, as part of an application for a subdivision, the application shall include wildlife inventory. And the wildlife inventory must be prepared by someone who has this wildlife credential. And there shall also be a, you know, forest plan, and it's got to be prepared by this type of person. I mean, that's what it sounds like you're saying.
It does.
Well, I, I'm suggesting that, but I think we, we can use some judgment and not make a blanket recommendation, depending on the appropriateness for the, the piece of land that's there. If there's no forest on the land, then you certainly don't need a forester. But if there's a question of drainage and stormwater issues, then perhaps you do want a geologist, and you want a water quality expert.
And I think that's where we could factor in things, like if there's a stormwater overlay or a wildlife habitat overlay kind of thing, then if a development project falls into that area, then that might trigger those types of things.
Exactly, yeah, and you would use the, the maps to be able to determine which expert is required.
And I don't want to discourage this, this line of thinking, but I just want to also mention that the regulations already say that the town has the ability to engage the services of an expert, doesn't limit them, but engage the services of an expert that the developer would pay for if the DRB feels it is necessary.
But I think that that's.
But they don't always exercise that right. And, and so then maybe, what I guess what I'm saying, Gail, is that, for, for the commissioners, maybe some of the, the challenge is education. You know, the, the, the recommended action is educate DRB members and others about the use of the independent technical review portion of the regs. I mean, that's, that's already there.
Yeah.
It doesn't get used as much perhaps as it should. If it was used regularly, and the board was saying, hey, developer, we're going to get a geologist, we're going to get it, then I don't think we'd be having this conversation.
No, perhaps not.
It could just be an awareness item, they may not. There have been times when they have the ability to do that.
Yeah, and maybe so, and there, there certainly have been times when we, as a natural resources committee, have made those recommendations and had a civil engineer make the determination and have that pass the DRB.
And so, if that, if it isn't going to be enough, then maybe the regs do have to require a certain plan prepared by the certain party, but it's just going to be more complicated to write that.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to look at each subdivision, right? I mean, you'd have to go into the subdivision regs and look at each.
Well, you can set it up so that it varies depending on major versus minor. You could set it up so that it varies depending on zone, I mean, you could set it up many, many ways. And you could also set up weight, you know, the ability of a waiver. But then you always have the problem of people want waivers, and will they be granted? You know, if, if everybody will always ask for a waiver, and the waiver will always be granted, then we're kind of wasting our time.
Mm-hmm. Can we add that concept in of, of educating the DRB about?
And that's an ongoing process, because membership is always.
It does, yeah, which is why it just goes by the wayside, it's just, you can only, new members come and go, and if there's not this focus on.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of the right place for that in the plan, because it.
Maybe just jot it down, and we'll figure out where to, to plug it in, but I don't want to lose that thought, because it, it's a good point, Gail, you're. So, it's nine o'clock, we have some edits in the rural section that we could look at. And, beginning on page 20, right, Dean, is that, these are edits from?
There were some edits that were made a long time ago that were kind of responding to this general approach of simplifying things a bit, now, some of them are also Kate's.
Were these Kate's edits, or you're, okay, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Right, so Kate, Kate has made several as well, and so, let's start with those. Or maybe you want to wait until she's, when she's back.
What do folks think? You want to jump into energy and at least introduce it, or do you want to slog through some, some more rural?
Yeah, I don't think at this point it's worth diving into energy, because that's not a.
There you go.
Yeah, that's not a short conversation.
Okay, why don't we do a little more on rural while we're, while we're going? At least a few pages maybe, and we'll continue the conversation of energy to our September meeting.
Ask where I can find a redline copy of this to be able to go over?
I can send you the link.
Okay, that would be great.
Yeah.
Because this is really hard to read, and I only had access, or only could find access to the original old plan without any of the updates in it. And so, I haven't produced any comments. And so I haven't produced any comments.
Yep. Yeah, no, we'd love to have your input on it. We'll be.
So start, you want to deal with where first comments are on page 20?
Minimize the infringement? Is that the first piece you see?
Yes, that's her first major comment there. Yeah.
Okay. Minimize the infringement by retrofitting.
So is this an ad or is this?
This is a proposed ad by Kate.
I don't like the idea of, of using form-based zoning, only because form-based zoning is a, is a name. Really, it's just a name for zoning. So I think if we're going to do a, use a distinctive form of zoning, it should be rural-based zoning or something. But forget the form-based concept because I don't think we're, I don't think it's going to work in a rural area the way it works in the corridor. And the corridor is an area that's very complex. And I think rural area is fairly simple and to make it complex doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, I've, I've struggled with this one a little bit too. I know Kate's a big advocate for trying to introduce form-based into the rural district. I don't, I, I find myself thinking more like you on this, but I, Kate's not here to really speak to it. I don't know if others have a feeling of.
I think it'd probably be a good conversation for Kate to be a part of. And I, I forget the term for it. It might have been the same day that Jens was here. But using the concept, if you have four, imagine a perfect square divided in quarters.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that picture of if you have those four parcels of land and people build their houses right in the middle of each of those sub-squares, that's different than if you had them, build them toward the cross-section of all of those squares.
Right, but that's.
So being able to open up areas.
That's what the conservation subdivision does. You can do that without form-based zoning.
But couldn't, I mean, could we leverage those two, this and then the concept of hamlets along roads and that sort of thing? Does that all fall into?
We kind of do already though. That's what PUDs are supposed to do. The, the PUD concept was to shorten roads, bring houses together, the existing one. It, I just don't think it works because it's not, hasn't been well enforced. And I think it's partly because the zoning itself is not clear-cut what the planning commission wanted when they wrote that, the PUD. I think if we reduce the PUDs to three lots or two lots even, and grab and do exactly what you're saying, to create those spaces, to be able to use the open land to border brooks, to create the intersections between wildlife corridors or.
And that's again.
We can do all of that with, just by fixing the PUD concept.
And that's again where we might be able to leverage a, like a wildlife corridor or a forest land overlay or all, all of those things could factor in.
Yeah. I mean, she's not here. I, I think what she has in mind, I don't know, but I think it's, ties back to the transect conversation with, there are these transitional areas and maybe those transitional areas might be appropriate to think about from a form-based perspective. We need her here, so we're not going to make progress on this one. Second sentence, I don't have any objections to. Conservation design for subdivisions that we speak to elsewhere to maximize open space and view shed preservation and foster working ag lands without reducing overall building density. This is the other big topic that we talked about a little bit. So I would say we have to table that conversation about the whole density. Downzoning piece, that's a topic for another night, I think. We can move to page 22. Should prevent adverse, adverse undue impacts. I like that. I don't know why she deleted the second.
I don't either.
Sentence here because we've talked about this one, you know, the idea of this, you know.
I wouldn't mind.
Sort of path of lower density from the core.
Deleting the word distinctly, but it does, this sentence is repeated time and time again.
I think some of her thinking is that the rural area will not exist in the, in the future plan. It might be multiple areas. And if we think about the area that is currently the rural area, some parts of it might actually have somewhat higher density and maybe approximating parts of the growth area. If we want to have a hamlet in what's now considered the rural area, it's going to be, it's going to be relatively dense. And so I think she's taking it out because this would, this language would prevent that from ever happening.
So it presupposes the.
I think that's what.
Addition of.
And that's her comment in parentheses on page 20, saying, do we want to suggest downzoning in some areas and upzoning in the hamlet areas?
Yeah.
Having gone through that, it's really hard to change your zoning up, I mean, to increase the lot size. I think it's almost impossible.
It's, it's hard to have these conversations, you know, just focusing on the words without having had a conversation about the map.
Yeah.
Maybe have a focused conversation about the map will allow you to have the conversation about the words.
Yeah.
Well, there was, there was an attempt to go to 10-acre zoning and it was so difficult to sell that that is why the developable land concept came in.
Mm-hmm.
And that was two, two plans ago, I think.
How many years ago did that be?
It's.
It would have been.
Ten.
Quite a bit.
Two thousand seven, two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
Okay.
I mean, yeah. I mean, I think one of the ways to, to understand what she's saying is if you just look at the eastern part of the town and we have the conservation in the green, there'll be areas that will, that, that will expand or there'll be a slightly lighter green that is this new category. And then in places like perhaps crossroads, there will be, you know, something that's, that's different that is red or pink or whatever. So we might have one here. The, the transect is, is really a concept that works at a different scale than we're talking about here. But if you just get in your mind that there will be places that will be closer to one end and there'll be a little spot of it, it might be at this crossroad, it might be at this crossroad, it might, I mean, they're typically historically at crossroads. And that's what that, that four quadrant model is getting to. It's, it's where there are crossroads.
One of the things that sounds challenging about the, the hamlet idea is when you think about infill and how that evolves over time and you think about the part of the area on Falls Road that was not part of the village at one point. And so this is the area now that we're doing infill. And then we're looking at, is there infill that goes beyond that? And then does it go beyond that? And I guess you can't plan forever. But I guess you can plan orderly growth in a way. But I, I have to sort of struggle a little bit with the idea of hamlets because I think they're just going to present a place where we're going to have infill later. And what is that going to do for the, for the conservation of the rural zone? That's long-term thinking, but it's something that's worth paying attention to.
And in my mind, I don't, I don't see how we do that without substantiated overlays for wildlife corridors, forest districts, whatever we want to call those, because you could use those to drive, well, if, if you're in this area that has a wildlife corridor, then this wouldn't apply to being a hamlet or having any of that expansion opportunity. But again, I, I don't know that, I, I don't see that this is something we would solve in the plan, but it would be recommended actions or things to look into unless there's research we could do on places where things have specifically worked that we could reference in the plan for future bylaw development.
Part of this, that irritates me is to go back to the goal. And you read, it says Shelburne's rural lands while at the same time balancing the town's need for growth. And I don't know that the town has a need for growth. When did, I, I'm curious when that concept came into view. Why can't we just say the town's growth and successful integration of the town into larger? I don't feel a need to grow. And I don't feel like I need to make anybody happy for, I mean, growth is something that we should be looking at. We should be protecting communities by having growth that is functional and works good for them. But just to have growth because we need growth, it's a concept I don't understand and I.
So would your proposal be period after lands?
Yeah, I think it reflects through the document.
Or just get rid of need for and say the town's growth.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Because, I mean, the town's going to grow.
The town will grow.
Population grows.
Right. And people that have large tracts of lands are going to subdivide. And if we've got the five acre max, you could have a 50 acre plot that gets divided up into 10. And we want to manage how that is done in an environmentally friendly way.
Yeah.
Part of the infill growth idea is not one that I relish either. We just saw a development in the Falls where a two-lot subdivision was done. It was horrible. And nobody even wants to buy the, the lot. As far as I know, it's still in America. And it was, they totally ignored, again, it goes back to setting rules for PUDs. But, you know, it's, so I guess I'm reacting to, I think Kate is more of a growth advocate than I am. So that's, that's where my differences. I believe in smart growth.
Well, her last point was, let's talk about three-unit PUDs.
Hmm. Yeah, we do agree on a lot of different things, just we're coming at it at different angles.
I think you're more alike than you may think.
Yeah.
So are the words need for, is there, was there a consensus emerging that they are so profluous and you could take them out or?
I think it should just be balancing town's growth and successful integration.
Good suggestion there.
Yeah.
Delete need for.
That's what I admire.
Is that going once, going twice?
Yeah. I think it's sold.
Shall I have a hard stop at 9:30?
Yeah, it's fine. We're going to wrap. So it's 9:15. We'll, we have more work to do here when the rural district edits. So when Kate's back in September, we'll continue this conversation. Some good input tonight. Thank you from Sean and Gail and, and Don. Thank you guys for coming. Absolutely. Yeah, no, we're, we're excited to have you engaged and, and Susan as well. So thank her for, for us. We'll continue the rural. At the next meeting, we'll jump into transportation and energy. After our August hiatus, we'll be recharged and everybody will be ready to jump into some, some heady topics here with energy and, and rural. And then from there, we'll start to sketch out. I think that will be a meeting in itself, so we don't necessarily need to talk about what's next at this meeting, but we'll get into natural resources as well where we'd love to have your input and involvement. That's another key section. I think that will come either at the second meeting in September if we can get through these two or early October. Anything else while we're on rural? Everybody good with? Okay. Next item is commissioner questions and comments. Anybody have any comments, questions, thoughts? We, we talked about Shelburne Day, whether folks want to, if they're around on August 19th. Is that the date, Dean?
I believe it is.
Saturday, August 18th or 19th? If anybody's interested, I would just say reach out to Joe or Dean directly if you want to spend an hour under the tent with the select board or whoever else is, is hanging out there. I think it's a good thing. I don't, material-wise, I'll, I'll defer to Dean on is there anything of note where, put the town plan up, out there and say, hey, guess what we're doing for the next 18 months here is, is talking about the town plan.
Could that be a good time to try to find donors for the open land?
I don't think we're ready yet to really pitch that. I, I think it's a good thing to just start thinking about and, and.
Maybe next year we can collaborate on the table.
Yeah. Yeah, I do think that's a good idea. We need a little more planning and notice to do that, but. Exactly. I like it.
You could also potentially, sorry for interrupting.
No.
You could also get tacked on, there was the event at the Shelburne Museum a couple weeks ago, which is their big annual fundraiser, where they had fireworks and hors d'oeuvres and champagne and whatever. We, we had tickets. We didn't end up going.
Yeah.
There has to be a way, and part of the plan was like integrating the town more with the museum and all the stuff. And you have a collection of people where they raised over $60,000, whether it's part of a raffle or you have some presentation or discussion around that. That could be.
I like that a lot. I'd love to talk to Tom about that and, and the Barnstormers or there, there definitely are opportunities there to try to tie in the community.
Conservation and all that stuff.
Yeah. I think you'd find there are a lot of like-minded people who would support enhancing our open space fund, so.
The other component is the town has everybody's name and addresses for property tax purposes. Perhaps the town could require an email address as well, and then it could just be sent as a link to everyone in the town. Instead of mailing physical copies, right?
Yeah.
You get access to everybody's emails, absolutely. And then you're at least getting it in front of people.
Right. Great. No other comments from the commission? We will turn it over to Dean for other business.
You did mention Shelburne Days, which I had on my list. I wanted to just mention there is the LCT Town Fair that takes place October 4th and 5th. It's at Killington. If people are curious, that's, I'll pass that down. Do you want to talk about form-based zoning and Brandy and the checklist?
I think we should just touch on that. Happy to let you drive on that, I think.
Sure. I mean, I can pass down the line a document that you might want to peruse later. So a couple of weeks ago, Brandy had asked about having a phone conference to basically figure out the end of this project because as they get close to the end, resources get tight. And so it's kind of a classic situation where there are more things that she thinks you would like to do than there's really money to do them with. And some of the work that she's done as part of this project is outside of the scope of work that was originally drafted, and some of it isn't. Some of it's in it. So the document that's going down the table is her extremely comprehensive list of things that she thinks you, as the commission, would like to see done to the form-based zoning. It's just that there's not enough money to do them all. And so we've been starting this conversation about how this group could indicate some priority among all of these possible tasks. And so that's, that's the, that's the overall issue. We're basically putting this aside so, well, she's going to be working on some kind of loose end pieces, but things will basically pause so that the commission, all of you, can figure out what are the most important tasks that you would like to be done as part of phase two and what should wait or be part of a phase three.
Yeah. No, I think you nailed it. I, my opinion is sort this by the first column in original scope. We have to look at the yeses. From there. From there, we care about what's not completed. And then from there, we think about priority, right? How much effort is left and.
Yeah.
That's how I would think about it. If it's not in the original scope, I'm glad she called this out, but we just.
Yeah. There's, there are certain things that were not in the original scope that have been started and they're sort of halfway between and that it is, it'll be a little less comfortable moving forward towards hearing a document that is, is like that, but as an example, the very first item, consistent use of shall and must-will, she made some, she made a stylistic choice.
She did.
And we won't get that cleaned up, really, unless, well, it's not in the scope, she thinks it's mostly complete. Now there's a little bit left to do, so would we want to throw that into the mix? But I think your sorting idea is, is a good one and actually I could take this table and do that.
Yeah, I mean, that's how I'm thinking about it. I mean, if there is, I don't know, there's a lot to do here, which is what I'm struggling with a little bit. I know we're out of time and money on her contract and she's ready to close it out.
We're not out, but it's getting.
We're pretty close to being done, so I, I don't know. Any, does anyone else have suggestions on how to tackle this or how we want to approach it? Because this will be on an agenda in September.
Appears that all the yeses are pretty well underway.
I see this as part of the, like, the discussion about the form-based kind of like design subdivisions and transacts as well and all that discussion about like how you really want to integrate like conservation and stormwater infrastructure and all these other concerns, which seems to be very well done here.
Well, this one is, is a little more specific. This is essentially, you know, Brandy and her team have come in and developed the 2.0 version and we had an, an original scope of work for the contract that identified some stuff we wanted to accomplish and we were trying to zero in on, you know, what deliverables haven't been completed yet is all I was trying to get a look at. This is more granular than I was thinking. I'm glad she did it because it's helped, it'll help us going forward. We don't necessarily need to tackle all of this. I, I do think we should just figure out what do we want her to get done in the next month, right? To six weeks when we discuss this in September.
She, well, I think, I think for now, she, she will be, she's got other things that keep her busy, so I don't think that we have to resolve anything tonight. I think that when you have your conversation in September, it will, at that point, be the four to six weeks to the finish.
Yes. Yeah, that's what I mean.
Okay.
From that September meeting, probably another four to six week.
Gotcha.
So maybe we can do that since nobody seems to be objecting to sorting by if it's in the original scope, if it's not complete yet.
There's only three items that are, that have a large amount.
You mean like a, show me an example.
Large or small.
Yeah, these are the ones that we want to look at, the yes, no, L. The Y and Ls are the ones that.
Three and two.
And then 2206, number 11 is a Y and L.
And there's one more, the last one. On, not the last one, but next to the last page, at 11.
Yep.
Those are the only three that I saw going through that were on the original scope that don't have S's.
I mean, I'm thinking out loud here, but if there's a yes, yes, and an S, a Y, Y, S, probably makes sense for her to do that, right? If she has time in the next month.
Yep.
If it really is a small effort to do that, she may as well just complete it.
Yeah, I think by default it should be easy enough to say anything that's Y, Y, S, go ahead and do it.
Do it, right? Like just finish it while you have a few weeks before we figure out what's not done. That's kind of important that we may not be able to accomplish in this contract.
And then as we get to these lists, if there's anything that we see that we feel really strongly about, then that's something that we could talk about at the next meeting to prioritize.
Right.
Decide if we have consensus.
Right. And, and, and at least as far as the things that I had to mention under other business that might also be, and I would be proposing to you as an agenda item, is talking about the subject of a municipal planning grant application. And so it's timely, you know, is, would we want to take our shot at a municipal planning grant to do phase three? Or is there something else that is going to be a higher priority because we've done this work through the UPWP at the Regional Planning Commission? Would we be able to go to the well a third time? Do we want to risk, you know?
I think that's a good conversation to have when Kate's back. I have my views on that after the focus group.
So, so that's a, that's a topic also for September 14.
It's a good topic to talk about.
Yeah.
Ideally, if we continue with Brandy, she's still very productive.
And really familiar with everything.
Yeah, no, I agree. I just, we'll talk about it. I think, Dean, as far as the, when we finish, when Brandy finishes the work, part of her engagement is one final meeting, right? That we've talked about with the select board. When would that be?
Oh, well, that's going to have to be decided. We haven't had any conversations about the schedule for that.
Probably October.
Probably. Probably no sooner than that.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. And there are other things like the map that she's, she does have some things in mind specifically that she would be busy doing.
Okay. Okay, good. Anything else on your list?
That was my list.
All right. Take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Jason.
Seconded.
Seconded by Perry. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.